version. I'm gonna call the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Time is seven o'clock. We are eight minutes behind due to some technical difficulties. Clock not functioning in any other side of the office. All three, all two selectmen present. The third selectman has a personal family issue to take care of. He'll be not, who will not be here this evening. The town administrator is present. Recording for the town of Dunbar with Mr. Leo Martel. Thank you, Leo. We have in the audience today, we also have.
Road agent.
Road agent, we have a town clerk. We also have a moderator, town moderator, and also member of the chair of the zoning board.
Mister John Droidier.
Mister John Droidier. Okay. Dave, have the minister approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on November third, twenty twenty-two as amended.
I'll second those. Any discussion on those, Dave?
Nope.
You saw my changes, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Call him, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good sign. Malcolm, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from November third, twenty twenty-two as written.
And I'll second those and those that are non-sealed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now approve the public comment, Leo. Hackrow?
Yep.
Okay. For the record, please just state your name.
John Droidier, town moderator. President. We have the Star Harbor area. Just wanna thank the board. Unfortunately, Justin's not here. I think Tuesday went well. I appreciate all your assistance. And again, it's always the absolute fact, you know, kinda looking at, looking at what happened during the day and trying to improve the process. And I think it, it went off real well.
For as many voters we have, I think it went off very, very well.
Yep.
Sixteen sixty-eight, seventy-four, close to seventy-four percent.
Close to seventy-four percent.
And that's, that's attributed to the citizen number.
Seventy-three point six.
Yeah.
Oh geez, there we go. I think a lot of kudos to the, all the, you, you know, the people that were here.
Absolutely.
To work at the polls.
We wouldn't have, we would have been out there much later if we didn't have as many volunteers as we do.
Absolutely. Absolutely, so.
And I'd like to give kudos to the deputy town clerk also, because she worked diligently ahead of time with former town, town moderator, with mister, with the chief, with Officer Millione to develop the checklist, which saved a lot of efforts. And so having that ahead of time helped, was very helpful.
Thank you for that, yes.
That is very, that is helpful for the process as well.
How many pairs of condoms do we have? Thirty-six, right?
Correct.
Thirty-six pairs of condoms.
There are nineteen tables.
It's the most I've ever seen up there. I don't know, who has a record of that? Well, the thing is, we almost needed them because of the number, pure number of votes. I thought it was gonna be an easier night because it wasn't a double races, a Republican, Democrat. I could go half the number of races, we'll be out there by ten-thirty. Wrong answer.
Yeah. I, I had the same feeling too.
I thought so as well. But when you have so many on the Congress. We have thirty-four stacks of, of, to go through a votes council. It was, it was well done. John, true tribute to you too.
Well, thank you.
The turnout would be high, just based on the requests for absentee ballots. It was higher than normal. So I kind of based my guess on that. I didn't think it was gonna be as high as it was, but I knew it would be up there.
Well, if you look at the news, you compare us to dairy, we didn't have the promise of dairy.
Oh my gosh, those poor people.
We had a very steady, still waiting in line.
Their president's still counting ballots.
Overall, John, I thought it was a great evening, and thank you for keeping a sense of humor with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
You got in the building at the end of the day, John?
I'm sorry.
I heard you had some technical difficulty at the very, very end.
I did find, yeah.
They met you there.
I ended up getting the whole dispatch and they sent a trooper back. Who looked like he was like fourteen years old. He stood his tall. So, yeah.
Fair, well, it was a, it was a great, I think it went very smoothly. Didn't hear any disgruntled voters or complaining about long lines or long waits. And that's always so rewarding, because we all put a lot of effort into that. You know, long before Election Day, a lot of people have been working on it to make it a smooth process.
Well, I have to give you credit for one thing you did on the fly. You split the books for checkout. Remember you did the.
That was hard for me to give that out.
But that was on the fly, and it was on the fly, so that saved a lot of efforts.
Were you impressed that I already had the signs made in case we had to split the books?
You were probably, you just spent, but the thing is, the fact we could do that on the fly was excellent.
And we'll fine tune that if we ever have to do that again.
And one, one, the, one, one of the, the greeters, the afternoon greeter, she suggested that, and watch how you split the alphabet, because A through L was heavy compared to M through Z.
But I mean, we didn't split it in half according to the alphabet, we split it in half by the, the page numbers in the checklist. So just people that are A to L, they voted more.
Absolutely. We're gonna have to do something for those voters, it's kinda like maybe disenfranchise them next time.
They were just more interested in voting than the M to Z people.
No, but it was, it was interesting how that line was always more than the other line.
It was.
Okay, but overall, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Your team effort, my all-time heroes, thank you.
Let's do it again in March.
A little bit, little, lower key.
Yes, lower key.
I'm not enough voting for a while. It's a long days. There was.
Twenty-two hours for me.
There was a little. There, there was some, there was some issues with the, with the meals, and I think is I wanna address that offline later on. We just have to come up with, think about, think on the box for how we can improve upon that.
Okay. There, somebody thought they were short in the mail, but they were not, they just overlooked it. Yes, it was there. They just didn't see it.
Oh, that's nice to hear.
Yeah, because that did filter it and.
I didn't even have to worry.
No.
But, but I, we heard, like, like, people were saying, I didn't get my chips, I, I got, there was a diet coke guy, I ordered diet coke, I didn't get diet coke, it was little things like that.
Right, and, and the, the people that we got them from, and I just love, love, love their food. And it turns out they were very short-staffed, and so kudos to them for pulling through as much as they did.
And by the way, the gentleman who delivered, voted at the same time.
Yes.
So, okay, well, thank you. John, have a good evening. Get some slams, guys.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks for having me. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, and I have Mr. Bob Pike here, talking about. Drop weight, road weights, and assisting us is a road agent.
Oh, yeah. Assistant, you know what?
Well, I think it's your my subject matter expert.
What I'm here for, your ordinance reads that you, we gotta go to the selectmen for acceptance of the road. Zachary, Anne, Hilltop, and Payway Drive. When we bond the road, typically, most of the towns we go to, rather than you accepting a road, it's considered substantially complete. Now, what, how we base that, is because we bond it, we carry five percent for deficiencies, plus whatever is in line. And in this particular case, the town engineer came out and represented two towns. And it came up with numbers which we all agreed upon.
Is that wrong?
Okay. So, we've got an extra hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I think everybody agreed in terms of planning board, Jeff Seer, that it made no sense to put the wear code on, on the road this year. We'll see if we get winter defects, free-starring issues. So what we need to do is get the roads here. I don't think legally you can accept it, because it's substantially complete until we get these other items done. But we've got an obligation, the people have bought it, and be able to get certificates of occupancy. So, the wording that you guys have is a little ambiguous, and I don't know how you've done it in the past. I didn't overlook or overview, whatever it is, but we got all the money there. We got five percent of the original bond sitting, if there's any deficiencies, and I'm not saying there's not gonna be, there may be some stuff settling around utilities, cross pipes, whatever. But the money's there, so the game plan is to be able, let these people move into their houses. And maybe look at your, I think, because you can't, and Jeff is fair and whatever we, you can't say you accept the road, you accept it as substantially complete until I finish everything. There's some items in here that, the signs and stuff, I think they've all been put out, but that's in, doesn't matter. We agreed everything, oddly reduced the bond. On Grapevine Road, we still got full bond in place. I don't know if Josh Chapman's gonna try to reduce it or not. I, I don't even know what the bond is, half a million, it's not really worth going through trouble. But anyways, so we can address that and get people to move in where they're, since they're in your occupancy. You know, it's not like I need it. I'm here tonight, we, we got somebody moving in tomorrow, but we're gonna.
How many potential people do we know?
I have one going, Kenny Dion has one, there's one, two, three others in there.
Are you talking Zachary now, or?
No, no, Zachary, we've got, I've got two going that could be completed in sixty days.
And you're gonna do the same thing in Zachary?
That's what I'm requesting, that we do everything. We haven't requested a bond reduction in Zachary at this point. And again, that gets, it's a different, I, I think he used word as the, who was it that did that job?
On, on overlooking states, we did bond reductions as they went through.
Yeah, we only did one oddly, and that's at the end, and I guess there's another one out, did this thing.
Did you guys work on any of that wording with Tom, so we can?
I, I didn't, because I don't know what you wanna do in terms of, I, I, I listen, I know both sides of the story. You can't say we accept the road. You can only accept it as substantially complete. Because until I put that wear course, until Jeff goes out in the spring, and I, we won't even put the wear course until he's happy. It could be next summer, we have the seven houses going there, not mine, you know, I'll work that out with Jeff, and I don't care if I have to, or not.
You're in the privacy. You're in the privacy, buddy.
So typically, I have the calls to notice on the hearing, fourteen days in advance of the applicant's form, which we will do to accept the road. We can do the same thing at the applicant's request, which is at his expense, to have a public hearing exactly for that. Substantially complete for the purpose of certificate of occupancy for, and then.
It's the only, I, I don't think we.
Only because the banks might get involved.
I think we're all thinking this.
I don't think we need to do the public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, just the select board can do that.
What, what's the main, main, main reason, still the winter?
Well, that, that's basically why.
That's the question, the maintenance.
That's basically why Bob's here. He wants us to plow over this one, right?
Yes, but let me throw the caveat in there.
Yep.
I would like to see it done as town standards, and I hate to kick myself in the ass, but.
I'm willing.
Town standards? You've got this guy on the loose cop.
But I think it all stands, and willing to pay the town.
I, yeah, we have, the difference between this project and some of the projects we've developed is the one off of Mansion Road, Stinson Hills. That was several different layers, it was phased in, and the road wasn't completed, it was completed in phases as well. Overlook was kind of a similar thing. I don't know, I don't remember having.
Overlook, I know we gave them the bond reductions.
We got bond reductions.
In sections of the road, and they, and they had that one turnaround, remember, Power Way Out?
Yeah.
We give them some releases, and so, yeah, we had, we had different turnarounds. They were able to get their occupancy permits. The bond, when you get the bond in the beginning, it enables the applicant to sell lots, get building permits, get occupancy permits, the whole nine yards. And they all said substantially complete the road and just asked for a reduction in the bond, bonding, so it didn't tie their bonding capabilities or anything up longer than they need. And like you said, there's more than enough to cover.
The reduction of the bond been done at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
It was, what, two point something million, brought down to two seventy-five percent.
Two seventy-two.
And, and that was calculated, if you read the numbers, to finish code of payment, shoulder work, and like a five percent for incidentals. As Bob said, some of these things that they, they brought it in, the signs were up, the signs are up now, they keep pecking away at stuff. And it's, it's all done. You know, if I had my relatives, yeah, I don't wanna plow this one too, we got enough roads to plow. But when he came in for the subdivision, the intent is for the town to take it over, and what really is the difference? If we stop plowing it this year or next year? You know, that's all we'll be putting.
Do you have a subcontractor to plow it?
We don't have enough subcontractors anyway, whether we plow it or not, technically, they may not hurting for health. But we have the same crew we had last year, and said that. And the intent was to, for us to take it over and plow it. I mean, you're gonna give occupancy permits, so there's gonna be residents living there. I mean, I don't know, I really don't know, I was really wrangling over this.
I just wanna make sure that the crew you assigned to that route, or the routes.
Yeah.
Familiar with the road, where the turnaround is at the end, to, when, when to use it, how far we have to plow down, and that was.
We're gonna do the whole thing.
Yes, but be familiar with the road and know, know that that's now part of the, well, the.
Well, as it stands right now, I'm gonna be the lucky gentleman that needs to plow it.
Okay.
But no.
Jeff, are you recruiting for another?
Yes, I have been trying to draw up some interest, and I just.
Do you, do you have it on our website or anywhere?
I didn't know that you were, I can do that.
Well, we're on there.
CDM. Plow driver.
We have a lot of people, one towns landscapers and stuff, and they all wanna, we all help, we all, but that's not what we're after. We're after us substantially, but we're getting off the subject here.
No, but get, 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 get off the subject though, the question is, can we issue board certificates COs?
Yeah.
With it actually completed as it is?
Yeah.
The feeling is yes.
Yes.
And we have to be able to maintain, support our department, police department, road agent.
Regardless if we plow, not the fire department's gonna go down there, if there's, there's work, there's work in there, if there's.
Right, no, no, but still.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna say, well, road's not made, and we're not going down.
I think work with Tom and get the proper running for our next.
And Bob's right, you don't accept it totally.
A whole of public hearing, have to slap the.
Right, but we could, we could pull this ahead of time.
I'm just worried the next election's gonna be there.
Yeah, but it's next Thursday, but.
That's fine.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I, I didn't wait till the last minute.
Okay, that's one way, I, I understand, business is business.
Yeah.
Cash flow is cash flow.
I've been doing this fifty years, I, I don't expect anybody's gonna be looking for a CO for another month or so.
Okay, so we get time to clean up our language.
We're gonna write.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work on the wording and how to do it.
But in, in the wording, every time I work in, it calls it substantially complete.
That's correct.
Yeah, I like, I.
Then you can put me down the rabbit hole.
And then when everything is complete, you release the rest.
And we'll, here at that point. It's all about the block.
I don't, I don't even know if that's necessary, that.
There was a public hearing, it's a hall to the selectmen. Typically, the road agent and/or the town engineer, the engineer, but most of the towns I work in, the road agent tells us what we gotta fix. And we just do it.
He's pretty good on that.
Oh, he's a pain in the butt, but.
I, we got to do that.
We, we, we fight all the time, but we get it solved.
That's good. Well, I think we just laugh sadly, and I just keep coming back. Okay, sir, so.
We're on the same boat, same page. We're number. Zachary Drive and.
And, so there's three roads, Zachary.
Yeah, send your email.
Fairway.
We have to email there.
And I actually, somebody wrote in the other day and said that I put up the wrong roads, I put up countryside drive, did you?
I didn't even notice it.
Yeah, I put up Fairway, and I'm telling Donna, that woman's crazy, and then I looked, and I'm like, no, she's crazy.
One of your people bought them.
Yeah. So, so the countryside drive is coming down, Fairway drive is.
What are you gonna do with countryside?
I'll give it to you. And I got the mailboxes ordered, the, the post office in there, wisdom, is gonna save a ton of money. They're not gonna get out there, every mailman will tell you, takes them longer to get out, and my kiosk can change everything. And I don't save anybody six thousand dollars for those two mailboxes going in there.
How does it work with packages?
There's a package on each one. And then, everybody else, nobody even uses post office, everybody uses Amazon.
I was gonna say, well, they'll go down.
They'll go down FedEx, everybody's, all right, anyways, anyways, I guess, I thank you so much.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Jeff, you want, you want to go now too?
Hey, Bob, I think that you're gonna.
I have a few more things.
Do you wanna attend that public hearing?
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Well, I'm talking about the selectmen decision, so you wanna be there, I can let you know the date that they're gonna be.
Let me know when to decide, and if I need to be there, if I need to bring a lawyer.
No, I don't think so. No, so you're not.
Well, are you gonna bring Maria in?
No, I won't bring anybody, you're alone.
All right.
Can you check the mailbox, please? Do you want to find one? Bring it back?
Hopefully, send something.
Okay. I think you can prepare better than yourself.
Mike, you want me to read that, you know, and sign those off? You got the new house to sign too?
I can get it signed. How do I get the bits to be ready?
Let you fill in the black box.
No, it wasn't there anymore. I got it.
I went, I'm trying to stay up to where I'm still waking up.
You went to work, you have to know.
Jeff, just last meeting, we had a request, I, I'm sure Lee passed on to you already, about the deaf child.
I didn't sign the second one.
About the what? Deaf child.
It's in the box there.
Yeah, I, no, I got it, I'm looking. I just do signs for, is somewhere about ten oh eight where it goes, or is that?
He just purchased that property.
Oh, so he lives.
He lives there now, and that's where he's like to me, the sign.
And I just wanted to remind you, for Tucker Hill, they wanted children to play for the sign, which you took down, and I just wanted to back you up.
So I thought there was slow children to play.
Yep.
Everything's slow children.
Okay. Yeah, the other thing is, I just, this is a pa, this is a, a passing comment. On ordinary, ordinary way road.
Yeah.
One, there was a driveway, a paved driveway, have a, has a big dip there, I just, it was, it was brought to my attention.
Yeah.
Okay, I understood. I, I, I can't make, I didn't make any comment, I had made comment.
They paved it a number of years ago, and they stopped the driveway in it, on the edge of the road. Where the water goes down, it eats all the lid of a walk. I told them they could have paved the swale and handled the driveway, but I don't know what they want us to do.
Okay, I, I'm not sure either, but the thing is, I just wanna make sure, maybe you just come back with me and an answer, a little bit more. This is, this, someone pass that to me, just pass that, this, uh, just for you, FYI, news paper article about potentially getting some more dollars for you to park it.
More?
More dollars.
One of we've already got?
Yes, but I don't know if it applies, if it does, if not, you can circulate my.
Well, lucky God. More money.
Um, yeah, no, I mean. Yeah, I, we thought that was, that was a reasonable request.
Yeah. Where, where's the one on the face? Right, it's that lady's been complaining about the end of the driveway, and they were supposed to pave me a swale at the end of it, and I just haven't, and we'll get over it and do it.
Oh, so it's work, it's basically in the, in, in the queue?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
She's asking for a couple sandbags, because would they anticipate the rain? Oh, no.
Yeah.
Something, until you can get some kind of figure out.
Yeah, I'll get something, do something.
If that's all I had, anything else for the?
That's that driveway, you and I.
Yeah.
Hey, who is going to bring your lady over there?
Go back to the garage.
All right, well, thank you, Jeff. I understand. I have a kind of thing after you, you got one more thing on you, and I was gonna listen to that.
Okay. In fact, I do have something for you. I don't, if you could read this invoice, and it's, you're, you're a, a subject matter expert when it comes to fill, and bill cost. This is a bill I have for additional fill material for gravel. And it has a, it has on here, please take a peek at that, it has the amount and a bill for it, I just wanna see if that's a reasonable charge, or is it excessive? I wanna know why you're being jive about that. That's my question too.
What, what's the basis for?
The, uh, I think as if Tom's gonna have them, I was being tongue in cheek here, I was gonna say, they can come pick it up, because I didn't order it. It's, it's already under the.
Yeah, I know, but it says right here, due to, and then a quick gravel course in the parking lot, it's necessary to import and install additional grubs. Seventy-two yards of crushed bank run at fourteen dollars per yard. And.
What really bothers me is, is that.
It's like a hundred and fourteen dollars a ton.
That's the question, is that a hundred and fourteen dollars a ton excessive?
Yeah. But. Back to my original comment, I saw the plan on that part. The specs of the planning call for a foot of bank run gravel, six inches of crushed gravel, that's eighteen inches of gravel. We didn't say anything about using the stuff that was on site, that was a bonus, that there was something for them to use for previous town work. I mean, it was, it was right in the, the plan that you gave me, that I looked at, I mean, it was, it wasn't hidden.
They had the same plan from, what Ethan told me on the, um, that's not so much for the top layers of the gravel, but he had to put additional gravel down below that material earlier on. And he said, when he, when we went around these benches.
Yeah.
He said there was a little additional gravel there.
Yeah, but he figured on doing a walkway, didn't he?
Yeah, but it went.
He gave you a.
It went around the front.
No, that, that's, that's what I'm. I mean, the thing calls for a foot and a half of gravel, I don't think he put a foot and a half of gravel in there. Let's go out and do a test spec to see, do a cord and see how much gravel you put.
I think that is.
I don't think, there was gravel there before.
Well, right in front of the cord, Jeff, there was a foot.
Yeah, but the job consisted of having to build the parking lot, and it had the specs of a foot and a half of gravel, so why are we getting charged more?
That was my question. Well, that's what.
Sounds like he was just trying to scrape off the asphalt, use what was, that was there, pave over, but he had to add more to get it to the grade.
And it would bother me, this is app comes in, this is a request after the fact.
If it was a big issue, he should have brought it up when they were there, hey, spoke to some of us, and listen, I gotta use more material here, for, and explain why.
Well, when I was on site, he did tell me he needed more for the walkway, he was gonna use some more, um, on the, on the.
Yeah, but did.
Parking lot, but he didn't specify how much it was gonna be.
He didn't, he didn't have to put gravel under the asphalt parking lot.
He did, and he had that, but what I'm telling you is underneath that gravel, the original gravel, they took some of that out.
What'd they do with it?
They hauled it off.
Original gravel, it must have had value.
And they put some better gravel down, is what he told me. Okay, tell me the difference.
No, but I mean, clearly on the plan, the plan spells it right out, you can dig it right out, look at it, it says a foot and a half of gravel.
Well, I know they put that in.
So much of bank run, and so much.
When you look at the pore of the concrete, twelve inches thick, right there, and it's only down four inches now, just that amount that they put on top of that.
And there's three inches of pavement that go down from there. Yeah, so if there's a foot of concrete, it's down four inches, and three inches for pavement, that's seven inches, that only leaves five.
Before they poured the concrete, remember the gray stuff?
I don't know, but, and then the walkway, he didn't realize he was gonna have to put gravel under the walkway, and it isn't built up, it's even with the grave?
No, it's only that they went around the bench.
Hey, you guys can do whatever you want.
No, no, but.
I think this is crazy.
That's, that's what I mean, an opinion here.
Yeah.
And why?
It's a tale of this. Why is the town getting it, 'cause I thought he was contracted through Chacon.
Basically, he sent it to Chacon apparently.
Yeah.
It's going.
They did get that for value, right?
That's.
And I've not seen anything from Dennis Myers.
But Dennis Myers emailed me two days ago, and asked me about that, and I told him the same thing I just said tonight, the walkway. But did, did they come out, did men, did Dennis Myers, everybody come out, has he overlooked any of the work they've done? Said it's okay to go, it's okay to pay? Yeah, I mean, typically, any job I've worked on like that, you get it ready, there's some level of inspection.
Attorney approval.
Bob Pike spent two million dollars building a road, and there were inspections all through the process to make sure the town was getting what they paid for. I mean, now we get a bill after the fact, and say, you need this, but how do we even know if we got what we paid for? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I know the depth of gravel there, only because I've been there every day almost since that project went on.
I know a little more about it, because when they did that library addition, we, Simon O'Dett tore the parking lot.
Yeah.
And we put a layer of crushed gravel, good gravel and built it up and then they paved it.
Yeah.
That was when the town bought the library pit, the town forest, they gave the library the money so they could do with the big renovation. So there was a substantial amount of material under there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I whenever, I think it's after the fact, but do whatever you gotta do. You ask my opinion, that's my opinion.
We just maybe we go back for more clarification from the. Right, and I think is first of all, it hasn't been gone by the engineer, it's coming at.
No engineer on.
All right, but but it's coming after the fact. I mean, he put something down, I didn't order this, I mean, he didn't tell me about it until, you know, they may have mentioned it to you, but you're one selecting.
Well, he didn't know how many loads there was at the time and how much money it was gonna be.
Right, but I think a fair warning would have been, at least they had to give him a heads up, would have been at least courteous, I mean, I I feel like have not have a have a good day with this bill, but I'm not paying.
How much travel those loads on like three twenty-four each? I don't know what.
I I don't know.
Three oh four, what's he got, three oh four four? That's what he was gonna.
Um being charged a bond fee too, um so it's a twenty-eight hundred plus three hundred forty dollars.
It's not a caution, like it's a five percent charge.
Well, and it's a five percent charge on top of the base. I mean, I feel like getting me going down.
He spelt out a gravel.
Yeah, right here, yeah.
Um seventy-two dollars for crushed bank road gravel at fourteen per yard. Isn't, didn't he like, what's the number, three?
Then there was um a hundred and fourteen point three ton. At three oh four point four at sixteen dollars P T. I don't even know what P T means to you.
P is tons?
P or ton?
Or per ton? Well, I believe he's specking out a three oh four four, which is a state spec crushed gravel.
Oh.
You buy that at the pit though, where we buy from Mount William over there. And we pay ten dollars and fifty cents a yard for picked up in the pit.
So I don't know if he he must be buying this somewhere else cuz it's by the town, they sell it by the yard, so I.
Okay.
But that's a that's a spec number.
Okay.
And I mean, yeah, he's entitled to, you know, profit all and all that, put it in place, I understand all that.
Other dollars per ton per yard uh cubic yard? I gotta see it again cuz I'm getting confused with the five percent, two percent. See, he all seventy-two yards of bank run gravel. He's sending all hundred and fourteen. Tons of three oh four four, which is a six inch crushed gravel.
Yeah. So his bill is going was twenty-eight thirty-four.
No, I don't think the price per ton or the.
Okay.
That's more what we wanna, I don't know what's the stuff goes for.
Yeah, no, 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 that is. And and but but Dave, I.
I think the whole, the extra is the part, I got, I personally.
No, but the thing is, we asked, they asked so much for a walkway, does a walkway, when you pull a walkway down, don't you, we have to pay for the gravel separately?
No, we just don't have.
Okay.
You gotta listen.
Yeah.
Okay. The walkway originally went behind all those benches there. Make any sense to put the walkway behind benches? Bitches end up being moved. So we still have around the front side of the benches.
Okay.
Those benches were all placed in there and a couple of them have a grant basis to them. So and the walkway is not the majority of that.
No, but.
Not really seem that he mentioned the walkway in there, but I know he said he used them for that.
What do you, what's your recommendation?
Um we can ask them for a little more clarification.
Okay.
Just so we know.
Well, I think.
I think you ought to table it till you get the third slide.
Oh, I agree. And uh. Let me get this America case time.
That gravel is you talking about the gravel was reworked in order for them to put the fresh gravel?
No, the gravel that was good, Jeff's talking about that gravel stayed.
Oh.
But the parking lot size is different than the other one, so some of that other unsuitables might have been moved. You know, but I don't know how much on either end of that.
How much bigger is the parking lot?
I mean, it's it's definitely a little.
I don't know, I I couldn't tell you. As long as I know.
Ten spaces out there.
I saw the plan, there was a specific plan with specific amounts and thicknesses of gravel. Assuming for the whole plan.
That that's what I'd like to look at too.
You know, I mean.
It was spec- it was specified it was gonna be like that, the thing is, why are we? If the material's out there, the material's out there, if they know it's grass, they're gonna put pavement there.
Well, um on the site work.
Yeah.
I think he's he noted in there that were unsuitables underneath there. And so what's underneath the existing ground or whatever, you don't know. If that was ledge and then the blocks of ledge, we would have had to pay for that. But we'll get some more clarification, we'll wait till Justin to. If I told Justin.
The wording of the contract is more.
You want what?
The wording on these specifications would probably.
Well, man could kinda understand it if you said, hey, listen, we wanna add two more parking spaces.
Okay.
To the existing plan and you gotta.
Yeah.
Order me, it's the cost of doing the job.
Well, like if you go in the middle there, if they hadn't had such good gravel underneath there and it was all big bowers from when they built the building. Then that would have been more for there cuz it was not shown on the plan that that's underneath, they couldn't do that.
Yeah, but was it?
No, the part that was a regular part, well, like you said, a good gravel.
Yeah, but. I I just.
No, I think I I I just I appreciate your comments, I really do, because the thing is uh. Just have this this much more knowledge than mine.
And I don't know what stuff goes for, I mean, they are, they were hired to do the job. And that's what the job meant to you.
That's why.
A foot and a half of fresh gravel on the whole part. And where it was good to me is a bonus for them.
It's very true.
You know? You're not listening to that.
No, you're not listening.
When I seen the good stuff, that they leveled out for that parking lot, they put hard pack on top of that stuff, so the base grade was down that depth.
Yeah.
So that whole grade came up that foot and a half, you're acting like they're charging us for the foot and a half of gravel that was on the.
No, that's not a foot and a half.
Right, so they they. But the plan said a foot and a half, if they should have charged if they had to put more than a foot and a half. That's what he's saying for. Cuz they had some.
That's what, let's get some clarification on that.
I think I think this is a case of not having enough oversight on the project, obviously. Cuz if there was an issue, it should have been brought up, he should have gone on the phone to Chacon, the general contractor, and say, hey, listen, Gary, I got a problem here, I'm gonna have to use more gravel. Cuz of X, Y, and Z, that's how you do these jobs, you know what they're like. And.
And the thing is.
And and then it's, all right, resolved, got a hold of somebody, explain why or whatever.
And we've been meeting.
Like I said, it's, I'm sure it's not gonna break the bank either way. Well, he talked about a couple of loads when he was out there and Bobby was out front.
Yeah.
And that's more than a couple of loads, I don't know how many loads that is, but.
Yeah.
That's more than a couple of loads. You know what I mean? Cuz he didn't tell, one hundred and forty, they all put um triaxle truck about twenty-three tons. And you got a hundred and fourteen. Yeah, so that's uh. Four, five, five. That's five loads there. And then seventy-two of the other, right, well, vice versa. Yeah, so I think we'll ask him.
I wanna get the 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 verbiage from our contract, what was, what they signed up to do to it?
Specs are the specs.
Right, that's what that's.
I think it's more, that's how they do it though, it's written on the plan, not that.
It's on the plan there, yeah.
It's a detail in the corner, it's got it's more paint on the plan like that.
Right, as I as I wanna see, yeah, I think we should.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Jeff, when you do the job, you have specs, you get the according to the specs.
Well, that's how you help. But the thing is, and I realize, and I I I've seen Dave review too, that sometimes they're unknowns, it's like when we when we look at the the substrate just for the uh for the addition. If it was bad, we were gonna have to deal with that, and it was gonna be costing, we knew that. And so they're unknowns, but at the same time, they signed up for a certain specification.
But that seems more unknown than should have been. It's more like that. Yeah, I agree totally, I mean, if it was that big a known.
If you need a lower tool, that's one thing, that's more than that, obviously.
I don't know what the the what he figured for the site work for the parking lot, but I bet you that's fifteen or twenty percent more.
Right.
Cuz the paving obviously is part of it.
Yeah.
Take that out and the other site preparation or whatever, that just for that particular area, I don't know, I I don't know what he figured.
Could I call you if we actually review this again?
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Just.
You got my opinion.
No, but as a sounding board, as soon as we get the specs too.
But I I don't know.
I wanna see what the what the the contract is gonna say to us. I like them writing.
Well, he's gonna say I spent extra money on gravel, I.
Well, I think it's.
He already did.
Well, I think it's uh, I think it's, you signed up for, how much did you put there?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, it should have been brought up if it was that big a deal.
And.
And you bring it up, but you end up bringing up that it was gonna be that much.
And it should have been brought up, it's like a change order.
Yeah.
It wasn't brought up to me, I didn't I didn't prove it and it's done, I had, I did not approve that. You did not, the soundboard did not prove that.
No, he said it was gonna be a little bit more gravel and I said, well, how much is a little bit more, he said a few loads. Is the parking parking lot at the correct elevations in order? Um everything seems to be on the correct elevations there. They did slope some different than the plan shows on there, only cuz it worked better with the drainage that they have and whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tabled, we'll re- revisit that. Okay, let's go through the mailbox. Okay, Lynn, your Lynn was uh, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna describe Lynn today. She was ready to pull her hair out and it was more gray here today.
Department Labor Response is in here.
She uh she worked, from my opinion, she worked to the last, I think the departments did their yeoman's job of getting everything done. But the thing is, dealing with the department label is a challenge.
The response, I did send it to you later, John, please.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, so you can read it.
I hadn't had a chance to check.
Um the, that's the, just copy that, but this one here is the response, is that what I've got?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I already read these too.
My response is six pages long, um I had to address each uh violation in the order that was on the report. So that I could keep things straight and it took a better part of two days to report that, the departments were very um helpful in providing me the information that I requested. Um the way the Department of Revenue, Department of Labor explained it is that um they understood that the a hundred percent of these would not be able to be addressed at this time. But what I needed to do to was to respond to uh them in writing if there was any additional time required. So I did address each one in the statement that um violation corrected and then requesting additional time. So I expect a call from them next week to go over each item that um we have managed to. Correct and um whether they'll approve the, they should approve, they totally understand that sometimes these things are unknown and they have to.
Be funded too.
Yeah.
The electricians didn't give actual pricing on the.
Oh, that's correct.
I had three that I reached out to, one of them returned my call, one of them, that same person stopped in my office. But he has not returned my call or email since, so at this point, I think we're gonna have to reach out to additional. Only because the one comment that he said is the the ones that the. Emergency lighting that needs to be converted to a emergency lighting slash exit sign have the electrical there. We have an issue with this building, for example, that needs three, which will require electrical.
Of course, a lot of stuff's backordered with this COVID problem, sending everything.
Yeah.
Can't get half the things you need.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it is what it is, we met our deadline by today and uh again, the departments are very helpful in providing me the pictures that they got a probably sixty photos in a zip folder. That um you guys weren't able to accept, your Gmail's bounced it back, but I did send the report separately, so you can read that.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Relax, I'll move that one down. Okay. Um track the, we got two emails, the of course, you remember the eleven seven email, Woody, the traction company was down, it was late last week, we got that. And then it was um, he got a temporary repair on it and it's pending uh a full repair on it.
Is it right there?
Yeah. But uh the only thing I I thought he's doing a good job, he's he's got money in his budget for it, so he's gotta do what he's gotta do.
He's made this month.
Right, yeah. So he's working with a gentleman who's worked on it before, so that's good, good news. The only other thing is um, there was something in his email which would be to a uh. Uh why is the transfer station manager following the library, still plowing the library, I would raise that.
He isn't still plowing now, right?
He says, as far as still plowing at the library, I'd like to meet with the board member, a board member, even the whole board, define exactly what is expected.
I know what he's talking about there.
Okay, cool.
When he was at the town meeting there, I asked Jeff at voting, I said, we are, now that that walkway is, if that hill becomes like, say, January first.
Right.
Operational, that walkway around the front of that has to be opened up for emergency access now that we have the walkways special. So I asked Jeff, I said, do you want to be part of your um thing since you guys plow over here, and he said, absolutely not, John doesn't want to do any more than he is.
Okay.
So when Woody came in, I said, do you have the only other group of employees we have, you guys do a lot of snow maintenance? I said, would you guys be able to come up and maintain like walkways?
I I just, I wasn't sure where that was coming from, that explained, that's great.
So he said, yes, we can do that, and he said, um are we gonna get a separate snow blower or do you want us to bring ours back and forth? And I said, we can work out whatever you want, a snow blower is not that much money, but I said, there's no place to store it inside here. So um they have the special lift gate on their truck mic that we put on and he plans on bringing his down to keep it open.
All right.
So he said, as soon as they plow theirs out, they'll come up and do that one.
All right. Then he can, when he comes into us, when he gives us the next update, we can talk to him in person about that.
So and that's all paved now, so it's all good to do, good to go. In the past, uh configuration, the whole thing, John could do ninety percent of it with a pickup truck. And he would just shovel the handicap ramp and hold the front doors for Mary and Mary would.
I I you saw with the shovel.
The same as here, right, John would shovel it, but the staff, a lot of guys, when they came in, if it wasn't shovel, they'd grab a shovel, I'll shovel that short distance. But that's just, that's way too much to, you know, he's got other things.
He's doing the school.
Yeah, I mean, and you can't, it's all gonna be done with a snow blower by hand now. But cuz of the length of the concrete and all that, we've done, we've got a couple of people um looking to maybe come back to that department this fall already.
Okay.
I heard a second one again this week. So um there are previous employees, both of them, so I think that um, you know, this economy is changing like we thought it would.
Yeah.
And people better be wanting to come back as we thought they may.
I have to give kudos to Woody because he's developed a uh a working crew, that's got a good teamwork attitude. And uh I'd be leery about bringing in too many uh prom employees, and I'm calling all prom, they say they were always like doing this, as you recall. And asking, and they're doing this with money in their handouts and uh I I would say at this point, let's just be uh cautious as you. I'm not gonna micromanage him out as he brings us.
It's up to him.
Right. So I think let him run his department and uh just keep us informed.
The other one, the other one that was looking to come back is not one of the.
Okay, thank you, you know what I'm, I don't wanna get into the names, you know, that kinda stuff, it's not, it's not fair to anybody. Okay. All right, public comment. Jeff, public comment.
I wanna talk about some.
Okay.
Uh obviously, that's gonna be.
You alluded to it earlier.
Yeah, no, be honest soon. My uh Bill Nichols is, I don't know if he's seventy-seven or seventy-eight, but I, he told me it's gonna be his last year.
Oh, boy.
Been lucky to have him all these years and still doing it, so.
Yeah.
We are gonna need to adjust that next year. I've been, a lot of people that I know that are in the plow business, have several trucks, I've reached out to them and tried to line them up and they're, most of all of them are. They're either winding down a little bit or they have plenty to do, but I mean, it's no secret, the state advertises on TV and everyone, drivers, subcontractors, truck drivers and all that. So that we're gonna, as far as I know right now, knock on wood, less sickness or some tragedy, we we should be all set.
For this year, one year.
This year, yeah, this year, this season, and uh as you know, when we talk about the, we're increasing the plow a little bit, so you know, we're gonna spread a little more there. People have to be patient. People have to learn to be patient. Well, that's what I mean, it's just, you know, there's gonna be times when it's gonna be slippery. I mean, during a snowstorm particularly, I mean, it's just the way it is. We have a lot of people that like to give us pointers on Facebook and stuff like that, should be, we all take it into consideration, but at the end of the day, when it's snowing, it's gonna be slippery.
Although I have.
And plan ahead.
I I have to bet, I saw many kudos last year.
All the banter goes back and.
I know.
Goes both ways.
I know, but I, the kudos.
You're in, where did my memory go? Anyway.
You got some good kudos last year.
You're like me, I don't even look at it.
No, I, people like to tell me, yeah.
Anyway, so that that's where we're at with that. The other thing is.
Would money help, just I'm being just upfront, would pay help or is it just?
Do that, I I don't really know, I mean, no, nobody's complaining about money, that's the availability and the interest. There's a lot of guys.
You did address them last year too, I think, right?
We upped it, we upped the money, we gave them substantial raise for this.
And we we also.
Because of the cost of fuel and all that stuff. And all, as you know, just like all of us that own vehicles, tires, maintenance and all that skyrocketed as well, so to be honest with you, I don't even know if we're keeping up with that. Because it's such a fluid market with the inflation, the way it's spending everything, but we just tried to settle on a number that was reasonable and that would work. Um our other problem is, you know, is there's a lot of guys my age out there and they're coming to the end.
A lot of young kids.
Yeah, no, I mean, the the interest just isn't there, and it's the same in all of you, it's 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 common denominator.
Is Nick's sort of a younger group?
Yeah, yeah, he's the youngest guy, and I'm glad he's interested in doing it.
Baby boomers are retiring.
Yeah, and I mean.
Big bond to be.
And, you know, and again, with all this inflation, the cost and all that, people are like, you know, it was marginal sometimes, rather than, you know. They're gonna make any money in oxen, and say, hey, I'm, I'm doing it, I'm gonna, you know, go do something else, which is fine, but we'll deal with it, we'll solve it, it's, it's not gonna be the end of the world.
No, but the thing is, uh.
It's a bit frustrating, but.
Yeah.
Um, so having said that, I mean, we're, the town is gonna need to hire another employee. We're gonna really seriously come up with a plan between myself, the Highway Department, and this, like, I mean, it's just the way it is.
Lynn kind of alluded that, moved it to me already.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been bantering around a little bit, but it's. We're gonna have to really, we're gonna have to really start the process.
You know, the days of volunteers and one employee staff is not gonna cover.
Yeah, and we're fortunate.
Do you have one full-time employee?
Yeah, we're fortunate to have Peter Gamarsh, because he's an individual that can do a lot of tasks by himself. And is very capable, I mean, he's, he's a good fit that way, and, you know. Quite honestly, it isn't the best environment to send. An individual up by themselves doing a lot of the tasks he does, you know, on the street, on the side of the road. I help him when I can, and I help him when he wants some help, and a lot of times, he says, no, I can take care of it, and he's got good judgment and all that, but.
I know you had some part-time help during the summer, is it?
Yeah, well, that's all kinda dried up too.
Okay.
We went through the family, my son did it for a number of years, Jackson, and Pete's son did it for a number of years, then when he got his accounting degree.
Okay.
He decided that was a better way to go, which I don't like, but he did, it's good for him, um, Pete's pretty much out of kids.
What's Jackson doing?
He's a fireman.
So he's not coming back?
No, he, he helps, he helps us plow in the winter when his schedule allows it. And if we're in a bind, and I say, hey, listen, can you help us, he would come in and help us, who's there? Basically, he's an emergency, you know. But, you know, he's.
At least you have that.
Yeah, no, he, the only reason I have that is because he's family.
I'd like to talk offline later about some of the options you may even bring to him.
And then, uh.
You mean, whereas, uh, I, I, I don't wanna wait till next fall to, this time.
Oh, no, no, we gotta be, well, we gotta be proactive with the budget.
Yes, I'm saying.
So. And, and again, I, I. I don't know if just, you know, you're gonna give guys, how much an hour raise more in a truck, twenty-five dollars, thirty, thirty dollars, fifty dollars, I don't know if that.
But the thing is, having a second boy makes it more expensive.
We, yeah, but, again, you gotta think, and look at the big picture with that. Then you gotta buy it on the truck. So we're gonna fund that person.
Well, you know, you know the old truck you saved?
You, you just, that's, sounds good in theory, but there's a reason we replace it.
I, I missed it.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, you gotta, you, you want to buy either. A brand new and a very late model used one, but you're gonna do that, that's a lot, but, that was a big expenses. And we gotta really seriously, as a town, be thinking.
What about for the first year or two, rather than the one ton only, do we get the?
Well, we do that now, but it's seven years old now.
Right. So. The new one's seven years old?
The new truck, the new one's seven years old. Well, we bought it two thousand fifteen, it's two thousand twenty, time flies.
Yeah.
You know, I, there's nothing wrong with it right now, but I, you're right, that is an alternative, that's what we do now, because we need to, you know, work on that budget process and that. Well, that's what I mean, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta be proactive.
It's not planning, making the plans work.
Yeah, cause eventually it's just.
Alright, well, budget teams are coming up, bringing it to us.
Well. It's more than just bringing a number.
I'm gonna have to look at the capital improvements, that's expired, you see him?
Better. Uh, it's got nothing to do with cap, I know what you're saying, yes, but it really doesn't have anything to do with that.
It's called, it's called growth.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
And, and, you know, we're getting a little of it, I mean, we're getting our share of it. You say the new roads, yeah, they, they don't really cost us much in the beginning, because they're brand new. They require very little maintenance, just snow plowing, basically is it. Yeah, you have to do a little minor shoulder repair and stuff, but nothing major to them. Typically, with these roads that are designed now, the drainage is adequate, you know, the colors are adequate, um, they're wide, they're built to a specification, and they have, you know, a good light to them.
I can't say how nice our roads are, but we have, those ones are already done, our.
Yeah, no.
Even the ones you've done a few years now.
Just, just a coat of pavement makes it a lot better. So it's just stuff we gotta really think about. And the other thing, one more thing, I don't even wanna get out of here.
Alright, it's okay.
Our, uh, stipend for our snowplow contractors.
Yeah.
When are we starting that?
It's supposed to be the, that.
This month?
Yeah, in a couple weeks, I've got the date.
Well, if we start the twentieth, the week of the twentieth.
It's in.
It'll end April first.
When did you start it last year?
I can't remember the exact, it wasn't like the twenty weeks.
Yeah, twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks.
I'm doing those up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was already pre-prepped.
So. The calendar's by, you know, next week, but the following week.
Right, we, things getting along.
And I believe if I did my math right. It'll be, it'll end the first of, uh, April three.
Which works.
Five hours whether they go out or not.
Correct.
And if, obviously, if they go out.
And then, you give them a big point.
And, and ninety percent of the time, if they go out, it's gonna be for five hours anyway, so it's normal.
Did we have the guys sign a new form and a new rate yet?
There were, there were, Joe Marie, I asked her to call him directly, and he'll come in and sign it.
I'll see, make sure.
And I didn't, I never did ask her if they came, then I just assumed, I knew she did, because I don't remember signing the pay rates for them.
Um, you guys.
Oh, yeah, we approved it.
Yeah, you guys made a motion to accept the new rates, and that you might have done it.
I'm just saying, I have not signed, when they come in and sign, we have to sign below now.
You have one form discussing the rate of pay, and it's on the second page, they come in and sign a copy of the one that you've signed for theirs, and it's not the same as employee.
Oh, it's not, no, it's, it's a stipend.
Yeah.
We have, I think we bumped it to a hundred, even a hundred dollars an hour, it was eighty-five, we put it up to a hundred in the small truck.
So you guys, you sign the original?
Yeah.
And then Joe Marie makes copies of those, and they sign it.
Alright, good, I see, I recall that.
I, Joe, I believe called, and I haven't checked with his. So, we're gonna obviously implement that.
Assume.
Yeah.
And again, they'll, they'll, they'll send us an invoice on call.
Once a week, we'll do that, like we seem to work the best.
Yeah.
That seems to be well received.
Oh, they love it, I mean, that, that's kept these guys.
Made a difference.
Complimenters, you know, I mean. Cause sometimes, like being the last year, it was probably like three weeks at the end, and then. They had the expense of having the truck, and getting it all ready, and didn't allow it all, so it kinda made it a little nicer for them.
Okay, great.
Alright, I think that's it.
I give what you do.
Well.
That's, hasn't been changed by the way, it's only five out of thirty.
Oh. I, I thought it was coming, I thought it was coming.
What's with this?
I, I.
You don't have a clock in the other end.
I look, it's, I did the same thing.
I definitely can't hold this one, you need to go.
She doesn't want anybody watching the clock in the office.
No, we're still watching.
Absolutely, get back for five minutes out of here. Yeah, alright.
Wanna go to the, uh, wanna give public comment to get me more time, right?
No, we're, we're done with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, for being to, uh.
Yeah.
Nothing else right now?
Non, non-public, we have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, and bring it to me.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it to you.
Okay, brought to me?
Yeah.
Um, during town voting, cause we have twenty or so hours sitting around there. Um, I did make some inquiries about, uh, two pieces of property in town here. So, uh, we could be a little bit proactive with them, maybe. Um. What was across the street here? Uh, followed up with maybe some possibility of additional parking.